We will have a moment of silent meditation then pledge to the flag. Thank you.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It is June 19th. All three county commissioners are here. I call the meeting in order. We will now have consents and approvals.
Morning.
Good morning.
We have ten exonerations for $2,525.10. Vouchers, general county fund, $151,222.34. Coal severance, $4,0884.53. 911, $144.57. Home confinement, $7,006.119. Chestnut Ridge Park, $7,046.57. Mason Dixon Park, $342.59. Transportation levy, $32,679.14. Assessor's valuation, $5,446.73. Purchasing card vouchers, general county fund, $97,468.92. Coal severance, $47.23. 911, $658.98. Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,002.13.14. Mason Dixon Park, $398.52. For a voucher total of $309,170.25. We have budget revisions, one that requires state approval, moving money from contingencies to capital outlay other businesses, or their buildings, and one that requires in-house approval for general fund for home confinement. Position vacancies for boards and authorities, the West Run Board of Zoning Appeals, the Mon County Planning Commission, Mon County Development Authority, Building Commission, Camp Monthly Advisory Board, and the Board of Health. Fiduciary matter, or fiduciary orders for June 19th, 2019.
Move for approval, second.
Pop, move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes.
Thank you.
We will now have introduction of new employees. The Honorable Mr. James Smith, Director of Everything. Yeah, I thought of Honorable once.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, I do know. Yeah, yes.
Thank you, James.
Yes.
Good morning, commissioners. I would like to introduce Alexandria Keefe. She comes to us from Marion County where she had experience as a telecommunicator. She started with us Monday. Her starting salary is $16.30 per hour, and she will be on a six-month probation period. So...
Move for approval?
Second. Pop, move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome.
And just to clarify, she's a Mon County resident.
Yes, she is a Mon County resident that we brought back from Marion County to us.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. And Jimmy, thank you for 911 handling this situation on Saturday night on River Road. We really do appreciate it. It was a unique situation. We have Mark Music, or do we have something from the assessor's office?
Sheriff does.
You want to just skip over it?
We'll skip. Do we have the sheriff's office?
Yes.
He doesn't have an employee.
No? Okay, do we have anyone else?
I know of.
Oh, okay, I'm just looking at what is...
I know.
Okay, we'll close that. At this time, we will have comments from the public. If you'd like, we'd love to hear from you. Come before the mic, state your name, your address, and anything you'd like to talk about. Does anyone like to speak? Yep, feel free, come right up. And I'll... yeah, I'll be at Mark. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Terri Burse. My address is Round Table Court in Morgantown, West Virginia. I'm a lifetime resident, as you might say, from Osage, West Virginia. And I wanted to make a comment regarding the newspaper article that ran with this picture. I think we've all seen it. And my comment is, this is not who we are. This is a representation of someone that does not live in our community and is not responsible landowner at this time, or he wouldn't have left it get this way. Who we are is someone that enjoys looking at the baseball game when the Big 12 tournament was here. I moved to Texas for a long time. I had people come in for that. I saw people there, and they were really impressed with that stadium. It was a great view. But who we are is people that are buried there. Who we are is my grandfather, who kissed his wife in the morning and went to the mines and left a wife and eight children in Osage. Who we are is that woman, raised eight kids. None of them were in trouble. They all graduated high school. Most of them went to Michigan to work in the automobile factories. None of them worked in the mines. With me today is my mother and my aunt, who came in from Michigan, because she comes in every summer from Michigan, back to Osage to see things and visit her sister. There's only three of them left now, and we would like some quiet, peaceful, decent living conditions. I go down there a lot to see my mother, very involved with the museum. And I know that you guys appreciate the museum and the history that we teach to our young children. We have young children in Osage. We have young children that get off the bus in front of that building in Osage. We have elderly people that ride that bus and get off of that bus in front of that building in Osage. We have a direct view of that house every morning we wake up if we go see our mother. Every morning she gets up, she sees that house. There is no way to get in and out of her house without going past that. And the majority of the people that live in Osage have to see this. This condition has deteriorated, not in months, but in years. The editorial response to the picture was a little more of what I believe to be accurate. We're not asking you to change what Osage came to become. The flood changed it forever. What we're asking is a decent place to live for the elderly people that, first of all, survived losing their relatives in the mines, raised their children, and told them that it was important that they walk the fine line. And what Osage gave to you people in Mon County is a lady that studied and got a PhD and moved back here to help with the opioid crisis. What Osage gave to you people were too many nurses. A lot of nurses, let's just say that. What Osage gave to the people of this county, our sons and our daughters that went off to serve in the military, they have two of their children that went to the military. They came back, and they're very productive members of society. And we have... One minute.
You're in your five minutes.
Yeah, if you could do a conclusion, then I'll...
A conclusion is, is that this is, this condition is not the fault of the people of Osage. This condition is the fault of the people that don't live in Osage and are absentee landowners. Every single incident that has been associated in the last couple of years in Osage have occurred on property that was not owned by a resident of Osage, more so owned by people that live outside and just basically left it go. That's the situation in Osage. And the people of Osage, the people that came from Osage, we don't want this to happen anymore. I don't want to have to go see my mom. You know, you get it, right?
Yes.
What I'm asking is that this system has, that we have, is full of flaws and is full of greatness, but it needs to be cleaned up, and it needs to be cleaned up now. We have kids that are hanging around there. And we have a miners' memorial day and street fair in September
Right.
that brings in approximately 150, 200 people. We're going to have people all over the place, and we got a bad situation. We're asking the county to step in and clean up the mess, please.
Thank you very much. You spoke very eloquently, Terri. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Blue.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Sure.
My name is Dolly King, and I live at Five Tulk Street in Osage. I'm here today to tell you and ask you, please. The culvert, he, on that side of the street, he put the trash on the culvert that goes under the road into the creek. Now, the water, when it rains, it just lays there, and it's running our road. Also, this morning, from last night, another beam fell on the power lines, and Comcast's out there, Verizon's out there, and they don't know what to do. They said they can't do nothing, but it's up to the county commissioner. I'm asking, get that culvert open. I mean, if I was a little bit stronger, I'd go over there, because I keep that end of the town clean. I walk them streets every day, and I pick up what they throw on the ground, papers and that, and put them in my garbage. I just hope the county commissioner will help us. And I pray to God that you will open up that culvert. The culvert's there, but it's got big bricks like this in the culvert on that side. If we can get somebody to move them, the water would come from the Bethel Road down the ditch that the county has put there to go, waters that go in the culvert. We need help, and I'm hoping that you will give us help. I hate to be the mean one, and everybody says I'm mean, but I'm not mean. I'm just trying to keep the county, to keep our end of the bargain clean. I thank you very much, but you know, it's raining, and the rain tonight, another beam's going to fall on that power line, and our ambulance there at the, in Osage, they're going to be out of power. I'm going to be out of power, and I'm going to be making some phone calls. You better believe it. I thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dolly. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Sure.
So my name is Nancy Dunn, and I actually have moved back to Morgantown to deal with the opioid crisis. I'm a nurse, I am a nurse educator, I'm a nurse researcher. I actually work with WVU Pain Management to try to get these drugs off our street. I was born and raised in Osage. I was often told that nothing would ever come of the people from Osage, but I'm here to tell you that you guys are wrong. We take more pride in cleaning up this mess than anybody else. I'm more of an advocate to clean up the opioid epidemic in West Virginia than anybody who's been brought in here from some big city. I have worked for more than 20-some years down in the bottom part of the state where the opioid epidemic supposedly began. But let me just tell you this, you're wrong. It's everywhere, okay? What my mom is bringing to light is that in Osage, we have been a forgotten town. We were once a rich, bustling town that highly supported Morgantown. Then we were devastated with disasters, flood disasters, mining disasters, and basically we were told that we were of no good, no consequences to Morgantown. But we keep surviving. We are strong people, okay? But what is happening is, is the people that are not living there are actually devastating the town because they bought pieces of this and that, and they don't do anything with it. All my mother is asking for is that they clean up the mess. That particular mess is directly correlated to the opioid epidemic. If you don't believe it, come walk with us. Come go in the building with us. I challenge you guys to come out and spend a day out there. I challenge you to find research that says that it's not linked to the opioid epidemic. I challenge you to find people that have not died in that town from an opioid epidemic, which these type of condemned buildings allow people to sell, inject, and kill our residents of West Virginia. I challenge you to find that there's not a link from Michigan to Osage, which then again goes to Morgantown, which goes directly to Huntington, which goes directly to Florida. I challenge you guys to come out and fix the problem. I challenge you guys this. So I ask you guys, do you have any questions?
We're not allowed to respond yet at this time, but if you stay around, we will respond, okay?
Thank you for your opportunity.
Thank you very much, Nancy. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, we will now close public portion. We will respond when, during the county commission reports, okay? Calling for grants, we have no grants today. Ironically, number seven is something that you all may be interested in. It's Mon County abandoned and dilapidated property enforcement agency. Request to move the property owned by Steve Morris described as District 16, Map 1, Parcel 102 to the complaint stage. Should we have Tim come up?
Tim's going to come up and address all that.
Yeah, and Tim, if you might want to just generally explain law and the process of the state, just a general comment of the stages and how long it takes. I think what we want to do is, for to get something changed by law, you have to go through a process, and Mike, we want to explain this.
Yes, sir. The process is, once we get a complaint, we have to, I go out and inspect the property. I take pictures of it, I write down documentation, I have to do the research to find out who owns the property. Then we fill out notice of violations and send those to the property owner. They are sent certified return receipt. When we get that receipt back, that's when the process starts. The notice of violations are 30 days, okay? And we'll back up just a little bit. If that letter comes back not signed for, then we have to put an ad in the paper about that property, and that runs for 30 days, okay? After that 30-day period, when that notice of violation expires, then we go to what's called complaint stage. Complaint stage, we request that it goes to complaint to the commissioners. The landowners are notified, and that process is 60 days. After that time, if the landowners do not comply, it goes to what is called the fine stage. They are fined $100 a day, including Saturdays and Sundays. That process is 90 days. So unfortunately, we have to follow that procedure, that program, and it's, it's six months. We, we have been fortunate with a lot of properties that the landowners clean them up, you know, within the 30 days or maybe 60-day period, and we don't have to go through the whole process, but it does happen occasionally. And I, I understand the frustration. I feel the frustration with the complainants. You know, that's, that's a long time to wait, but we have to follow the rules.
So you're coming before us now at the level of the complaint stage?
Yes, sir.
So we have to now...
Requesting that we go to complaint.
Requesting, yes.
I'm sorry? Requesting that we go to complaint stage.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Members of the commission, on behalf of the Montague County Committee for Abandoned and Dilapidated Properties, I would like to request that the property located on Scott's Run Road in Osage, District 16, Map 1, Parcel 102, owned by Steve A. Morris, Jimmy Kirk, and Deborah Herbert, and including the tax lien holder Cynthia Solomon, be moved to complaint. And also, I was told that I could go a little step further. Additionally, I would like to request the property located at 140 West Jackson Street in Westover, that's District 7, Map 5B, Parcel 44, owned by Sean Malone, be moved to complaint. The allotted times on the notice of violations for both have expired, and the properties are not in compliance.
Okay, I'd like to handle these separately. I move that we move the Steve Morris property to complaint stage. Discussion?
Second, go ahead.
Now, Tim, if you've got a property, in this particular instance, I need you to educate me, if you have a property that is falling down and spilling out into the public area, is there anything that you can do about that while you're going through complaint stage or these stages? In this instance, I'm assuming this culvert isn't the individual's property, but it's either joint property or right-of-way, or is that something you can investigate?
Yeah, this would be, probably a DOH state road, since it is a culvert that...
As a request from the commission, could you investigate that? And if it's something that's on state property, could you, is that a separate process to get them to go ahead and get moving on getting this culvert cleaned?
Yes, I will check on it, and I can get ahold of the DOH and see if they can get that opened up as soon as possible.
Yeah, if you could do that and report back to the commission, I'd appreciate that.
Sure.
This whole thing is unfortunate, and I appreciate you guys coming here and your comments. We will, we do take this seriously, and we will do everything within our power to address it. I've had individuals say, well, I can't, can't, can't we just go down there and clean it up? But there's a host of legal issues, you know, if there's asbestos, and you go there and clean it up, and then whoever the Good Samaritan did that is now liable. So we have to make sure that we follow all the procedures, but I can guarantee you that we will, our abandoned and dilapidated folks will keep in constant contact with us and along regarding this process.
As an, as of the sign, it's been my privilege to explain to hundreds of people that one of the biggest frustrations, I was a small business owner in my previous profession, and when I made a decision, I was able to enforce that decision as to what would go on. The frustration that one feels when one understands fully the limitations that are placed on commission, or the structure and stricture of law that must be observed before something can actually be enacted. In this case, I think that's a wonderful example, but rest assured, we have all been to Osage, we know the, we know the problems, we do support the community, and we will be there.
And Nancy, I do agree with you, it is very frustrating. I spent 32 years as Director of Gonsal University High School. They were my students. And as you know, it becomes very frustrating to try and, they already have a mark against them because quote their own Osage, and we made sure that, we want to make sure that they continue to have the experiences that everyone else has in Montague County. So I appreciate that. That is a hard comment to hear, but it's also correct, so I appreciate you making that statement. With that, could I have a motion? Oh, I have a, all those in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Secondly, I'd like the motion that we move to complaint stage on the Malone property as described by Mr. Fitchett.
Second. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes, so we have both, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Tim, for what you do.
One more request. Tim, I don't know if you've met the individuals that have...
Don't guess we haven't.
We know what kind of coffee we like.
Well, I appreciate you, you having that relationship and keeping contact with them. If they have any questions, please reach out to me.
They have my phone number.
Okay, well, he will look in that, and he will provide you some details. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have correspondence letter from the Shack Neighborhood House regarding fiscal 2018-19.
It's just thanking you for your support and for the $17,000 that you've granted to the Shack.
Is that all the correspondence?
Yes.
I will note that I think all the commissioners have been receiving correspondence regarding the, the future potential Morgantown annexation application, and I haven't had a chance to respond to a lot of them, but I will respond, letting you know that we did receive them, and the commission will, will catalog and document those at some, at such time when a public hearing is held, and will read those into the record. So I did want to acknowledge that we have received correspondence. There's too numerous to individually identify, but we will, we will document those and provide them at a later date.
We've also received some via mail, so we've started a file.
Yeah, so we've received them via...
It's growing.
Whether it's email or, or mail, we're, our staff is taking care of that.
Yes. Thank you. Any other correspondence?
No.
Any unfinished business?
No.
Any new business? We have...
On the agenda.
...to consider requests by the City of Morgantown for use of the Courthouse Square on July 4th, 2019, prior to the Fourth of July Parade.
The application was submitted by Christine Way, the Morgantown City Clerk. It's, they're going to be doing some activities prior to the Fourth of July Parade, so they've reserved from 4:45 to 6 o'clock.
They're part of the Celebration of America group?
It is.
So we're not going to have competing entries?
No.
So I move for approval.
Second. Pop, move in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration approved. Funding assistance for three proposed fire hydrants to be installed by Little Creek Public Service District for residents of the Hallock Road and Carroll Road areas.
Move for approval with discussion. Second.
Okay.
Mr. Hudson's here, from the Fire Department.
We have the gentleman here from the Fire Department, if you would care to come and elucidate us on what is being proposed.
Elucidate? I have to look that word up.
Around two, three years ago, Little Creek was awarded a grant to upgrade the water service for our part of the county, which comes out of Fairmont, so all of our water is supplied out of Fairmont. And they were always afraid to come and ask for money for fire hydrants, because they're not in the business of fire protection, they're in the business for water. After some discussion and talks, he came in, I believe, and met with everyone
Yes.
to go over, see about putting some hydrants in. It'll be the first fire hydrant actually on Hallock Road, so that's pretty big news for us. We don't have any out there. So that's a seven-mile stretch of road with no hydrant. It's been that way since the beginning of time, and we're excited to possibly be getting one.
And you're representing the...
Trying Hallock Fire Department.
Your name's?
Josh Morgan, Fire Chief.
I think the consideration here is that the reason also, the line was upgraded to a six-inch line. Public has to understand that you can't place a hydrant on anything less than a six-inch line, so there was a mile, if I'm correct, of water line that had been upgraded, and so the proposal is to provide three fire hydrants, I believe, along this line. It will not decrease the pressure. The other aspect is, if you really consider, if you know where Hallock Road is, if they had, if they, if they have this, then they will, the nearest area to go and get more water for a tanker would be down near the pilot station. So this is a, a very tough trip of at least three to four miles time when somebody's house may be affected. So we think in a manner of safety for the community, this is a good thing. We do have programs to provide these type, but it has to be somebody that's going to come forward, approve, and have a six-inch line. come forward, approve, and have a six-inch line.
Any other questions?
No, I did want to point out that, and this is a good thing, I mean, three fire hydrants in the Hallock area, there is, I give a lot of credit to even starting this conversation to Joe Statler. He asked me to attend a meeting with the Little Creek PSD. I didn't even know they weren't one of ours. And I found out they were Fairmont, but they didn't know that, you know, they thought because it was Mon County and Marion County that we couldn't work together in regards to funding. And at that meeting...
...serve two-thirds of Mon County residents.
Seventy-five percent of their customers are Mon County residents. So this is truly a, I mean, the public ought to know that this is a great collaboration. It's just happening behind the scenes between two counties. We had that, I had that conversation, went to that meeting on Joe's, at Joe's request and informed them that, you know, we will fund, if you're gonna put hydrants in Mon County, we will fund those to a certain amount. If you're gonna bring new customers onto your line in Mon County, we do fund those. And that was news to them and I told them, gave them a card and said, come and see us. Well, they finally came and see us and with the urgency of the Fire Department, so I appreciate you guys keep pushing them, saying, hey, when you gonna go to Mon County and get these fire hydrants? So I really appreciate your organization pushing them, but this is culmination of that. I would like to amend the motion because we didn't put a dollar amount on the motion, so do I need to withdraw your motion?
No, just, if you make a mo, if you just say the number and he accepts it, then it's amended.
Okay, I'd like to amend it not to exceed $20,000. That would easily cover the total cost of three hydrants.
Okay.
Totally acceptable.
Since it's accepted, okay, we're now voting on the amended motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Thank you. Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
You all deserve the credit. We appreciate that. To consider appropriating $3,000 for fiscal year 2020 for the Patel District Fair Association.
Move for approval.
Second.
Prop moves in second. You want, basically we'll explain that what happened.
Yes, what happened here was a miscommunication. A new secretary treasurer had taken over for the Patel District Fair and were not quite aware of the funding request. We had allocated money in our budget discussions. It was not formalized by, had them receiving a letter, so we did have them come forward and explain to county commission the necessary request that next year will be made via what we do online or filling out proper forms, so.
Since Prop moves in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, are there other new business? Great. Reports from elected officials? I see a bunch of elected officials. Oh, and I'm glad you're here. I apologize, you also have a person to...
Yes.
Okay, so that's perfect.
So we need to go back to the agenda item that we skipped. So I move that we revisit the original agenda item regarding...
Number four, introduction of new employees.
Yes.
That's fine.
To accommodate Mr. Music who...
Second. Second.
So we can suspend the rules and go back?
So he's late for the first time in his life.
I apologize, folks. Kind of don't know what to say.
Oh, which I asked him to do, so.
Yeah, at some point. But I come before you to seek approval for a new hire of ours, Ms. Melanie Raleigh. And she will be coming on as a part-time data specialist. We wanted to try that out first. We've been exceeding a lot more work, especially with the gas and oil side and all the personal property, so we had budgeted this in and we thought this would be a good time to go ahead and give it a try. She will begin Monday, the 24th, as part-time, and as you can read down through there, she is 20 hours a week is what she'll be employed.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Second.
Prop moves in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great. Is there anything else you'd like to ask?
That's it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like? Nope. Okay, not?
Since our last meeting, last Thursday, we had our Mon County Development Authority meeting and then Thursday night I was, had the privilege of participating in the council circle for the younger kids 4-H camp as my daughter finished up camp there and it's always a wonderful event. When I go there and I watch these kids, you know, and they have, they're just so excited after a week of 4-H camp. That's really, it's a worthwhile organization for us to support and I'm glad that we do it at the level we do. I did get a lot of comments from people that I ran into that were thanking us for our efforts on the extension building, who will house a lot of those 4-H employees, so I wanted to pass that along. Friday, we had the aquatic center walkthrough. We've got a walkthrough as the building as it currently is and it's pretty impressive and I'm excited about, hopefully, it's coming online November 1, like we're planning. In the evening, we had the extension building site visit, which we do every Friday. This week's kind of a light schedule. We have a full day today. Tomorrow, I have a Mile and Park Board meeting at 7:30 in the morning. We have, Friday, we have additional Chestnut Ridge Park superintendent interviews and in the afternoon, we have a building walkthrough. Next Monday, I have an open gov call and then Tuesday, we have another extension building walkthrough, but that's really all I have from a schedule standpoint. I do want to thank you ladies for coming in and speaking today. Sometimes we don't hear about things till we see them in the paper or you come and, you come and talk to us and I really appreciate listening to you and hearing your stories and I do appreciate the contributions that Osage makes and continues to make to this community. It's not us and you, it's us, so thank you. And again, thank you to the Triane Hallock Volunteer Fire Department for pushing that project through. Sometimes things take a while, but eventually we get there, so I really appreciate your efforts. That's all I have.
Thank you. Well, as Sean mentioned, Friday was the walkthrough at Mile and Park as well as our extension center, but I would like to report, I got a picture of that as we speak, concrete is being poured. That's on the second floor of the new extension and 4-H building, so that is, that's very good. That's a good thing. That evening, Commissioner Bloom and I were guests of the Black Bears on their opening day, which we appreciate. I also did attend 4-H camp, but I went on Monday morning because that's the opening of day camp. Now, if you really want to see something, these are the six to eight-year-olds on their first day possibly of ever being dropped off by their parents for a camp. And trust me, all went well.
You didn't lose anyone, man.
We didn't lose anyone and my best friend Rory and I had our pictures taken together. I checked on my other best friend Thomas, as well as the other children who were in attendance. This is really, you know, I think there were 44 children on day camp. Yesterday, Commissioner Bloom and I both attended the pop-up plaza on Courthouse Square. It's really a good event. We hope that this can be expanded on in the future and I think it will be. This evening, I do hope to make time to visit the robotics. They have an open house tonight, so I do hope to go to White Hall for that as well as the business after hours. Sean mentioned, we are currently interviewing today and Friday for Chestnut Ridge Superintendent position and of course, Saturday, I think is going to be a really good celebration and I think people should note also that there is going to be a traffic pattern change. The city streets are going to be closed, so there will be a celebration on the Courthouse Square of West Virginia Day, which is obviously tomorrow, but Saturday would be a better day for the celebration, so thank you.
I agree. What Ed said, it was a real positive event, the pop-up event, and going with that, the coordination with the city, the county, and the downtown merchants. The West Virginia birthday party is going on from 1 to 6 o'clock and we will be closing off the roads and there's something for everyone, from ice cream to the drones that we're gonna be flying to beer that people may be interested in coming down to, and we're gonna have music on the Courthouse Square. Last Friday, we were fortunate, we had a dedication at the Mason Dixon Park, the Helping Hand food box was there and it went extremely well and we're looking to open several more in the county. And just as you talked about Osage and Scotts Run, three years ago, we had a dedication of the James Wickline Bridge in the movie and it really showed the contribution that people did from Osage. And it's just ironic, you're here now, but it was actually three years this weekend that we did that celebration. So again, hopefully, we don't have to go through this and in fact, I mentioned to my fellow commissioners that I'm gonna propose that we cut the timelines in half. As Tim said, it's 60 days, 90 days. I don't see why we can't do it 30 and 45 and that would be done at the legislature. So we will submit that, we'll see where it goes, but hopefully, that could expedite things because I can only imagine Tim having to go out there, Mr. Fitchett, and have to explain and do it and he has to wait at a time as it goes through. So we will try and stay on that, too. Any other comments?
No, the only thing I forgot is you...
Tomorrow is West Virginia Day and I hope all of our employees have a nice, well-deserved day off, holiday off, so forgot about that.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we be gone. Thank you.
We have...